Call crew town council meeting to order for the 11th of February 2019. Please stand. For all the citizens. Please join me in the presence of the ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have several delegations from the public. I do not see Dr. Adams. She was first up with that. I will go to the honorable.
There she is.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I just got here at seven o'clock.
Very well. I have Dr. Betty Adams from the Southern Virginia Higher Education System. Dr. Adams was requested to come and talk to council following Councilman Miskelik's request for information on workforce education and development opportunities, things that we might be able to do in town Crew or at least maybe even in Allen County.
Okay.
So maybe you have a floor.
All right. Do you want me to speak from there?
Anywhere you want. We can move on to the next chair.
All right. Well, I brought you a few things, and I think I'll pass those out to you after I speak because the tendency is to want to read instead of listen. So I appreciate your giving me this opportunity. And let me begin by saying that, you know, I'm Betty Adams. I'm the executive director of the Southern Virginia Higher Education Center, and I have been there for 10 years as of this January. I was born and raised in South Austin, wanted to come home after I graduated from Radford. There were no jobs. I ended up in North Carolina for 28 years, and so I was fortunate to be able to come home 10 years ago. And as a career educator, was just thrilled to find such a unique model of higher education in our town. And so I just want to talk to you, not just briefly, and then allow you to ask me any questions that you might have. And of course, you know, the theme of my comments is that education is a workforce investment. And I think we've proven that with the Southern Virginia Higher Education Center. One of the things that I wanted to point out or a question I wanted to share with you is how did Virginia, in the last, you know, recent history, win the biggest economic development project in U.S. history with Amazon? Well, yes, it had to do with incentives and that type of thing, but the reality is, based on what everybody says, is that Virginia's being able to show that they could provide the skilled workforce and the educational infrastructure to support the future growth was what really sealed the deal. And although I'm not an economic development professional, everything that I read and hear about economic development indicates that labor is almost always the number one priority for every major site selection decision. So in my experience, I know that being able to provide workforce education is important not only for our existing business and industry, but critical if we want to attract new people to Southern Virginia. And you may have seen in the Richmond Times Dispatch, and I think it was last year, it was a series of articles called "The Extremes of Virginia," written by August Wallmeyer. And he talked about how there really are two Virginias. And rural Virginia faces so many challenges. Poverty is one of those critical challenges for rural Virginia with an average poverty rate 67% higher than the statewide poverty rate. Rural Virginians earn about two-thirds of what Virginians do statewide. More rural Virginians are unemployed, and fewer have graduated from high school. The rate of those who do complete and go on to college is less than half the statewide average. The rates of suicide and fatal prescription and opioid drug overdoses are double, in some cases triple the state average, in rural Virginia. And while the Commonwealth as a whole is growing and prosperous, rural Virginia is losing population. And certainly, we can put on top of all those challenges, a lack of access to higher education is another critical challenge to rural Virginia. And so fortunately, in Halifax County, our local leaders were really visionaries when they recognized back in the '80s that the only way that we were going to transition from a low-skill farm and factory workforce, we had to have access to higher education. And so they worked to open what was then called a continuing education center in a 500-square-foot mobile unit on the grounds of a local high school. Thirty-some years since then, we now operate out of two historically renovated tobacco warehouses and almost 150,000 square feet of high-tech space. We have an undupli-headed headcount of right at 2,000. We became a state agency in 2005. And over the past six years, we've really found a niche in providing and delivering non-credit credential-based training for high-demand careers. In general, the Commonwealth has and supports about five different higher ed center-type institutions in southern and southwest Virginia. And many of us have grown out of grassroots efforts. And we're all different based on what our community's needs are, but we're all alike in that we're all focused on trying to fill an access gap to higher education. So in South Boston, we sit between two community colleges, and the closest state-supported higher ed institution, or the closest, is Longwood. So for anyone to get to either of those three locations, it is anywhere from a 45-minute to over an hour drive. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I should have turned this dead blasted thing off. Okay, now it's off. And so our original model was, in the 500-square-foot unit, was to make it affordable for two- and four-year institutions to bring their degree programs into Halifax County. And so, and we still operate off that model. So we have these beautiful buildings, these great facilities, and we provide turnkey operations for our degree-graining partners. So we provide the classrooms, we provide the equipment, we provide security, housekeeping, technology, tech support. So it really is affordable for them to bring their programs here. But as I mentioned, we really got pulled into the technical training niche by employers who didn't want a one- or two-year program for workers. They wanted something quicker. And so that's kind of where we found our niche. And so we have worked directly with employers in high-demand areas like information technology, welding, HVAC, and an area called mechatronics, which is really advanced manufacturing. And they told us, we asked and we listened, you know, what do you need? What are the credentials that you need? What is, what types of equipment do we need to put in our labs? And what do you want these people to know? And then what we did was develop a curriculum around those things, and we added, you know, hands-on exercises. So more than 50% of our programs are trainees in the labs doing the work and practicing the concepts. We also fold into that a lot of soft skills, like how to develop your resume. We have career fairs, we do mock interviews to prepare people for the workplace. We have an 89% completion rate and 87% employment rate. And over the last two years, we've put more than 300 people to work. So, you know, it's a joy for me to be involved in this concept and effort, and we're excited about the work that we're doing. Our newest project is a collaboration with our two community college partners, DCC and Southside Virginia Community College, and three public school systems, Halifax County, Charlotte County, and Mecklenburg County. And we are bringing juniors and seniors from those three public school systems to the higher ed center, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 10:30, and where they are taking classes and using the technological resources we already have in information technology and mechatronics. And after a year, they will earn a career studies certificate through the community college. They will also earn credentials that have been embedded into the curriculum, and they'll have high school credit and community college credit. So when they graduate, they can do one of three things. They can remain with us and take an advanced-level credential. They can transfer into a community college technical associate's degree program, or they can go to work. So I will say that our community colleges are Virginia's primary workforce development provider. We acknowledge that. What we try to do is complement the work of the community colleges because the community colleges can't do everything. They have limited resources too. And I believe you folks are served by Southside Virginia Community College. They serve 10 or 11 counties. So, and they get no special compensation for all of that area. So it's very difficult. But what we try to do is fill and complement, fill the gaps, complement the work that they're doing. And then we have developed articulation agreements for our non-credit programs so that our technical trainees, when they get ready, can transfer into a community college program. And the last thing I'm going to say is that we recently conducted an economic impact study. The results are really incredible. It shows that we are contributing $66.1 million to the economy, and we're bringing in almost $10 million in local, state, and federal revenues. So education is a pretty good investment. So with that, I'm going to stop and answer any questions you might have.
As a potential, as an employer of people, if we had an operation that would stay to expand to 15 people, but I need people that have solid computer skills and have a good work ethic, I would come to you or feasibly could come to you and give you a job description of what I need these folks to be able to do, and you could help us train them.
Sure, absolutely.
Is there any incentive for the business?
I know that we work-
I mean, do we pay? Or how does that work?
Well, there are funds available to you. There should be funds available to you, not necessarily through us, but through your IDA or your Workforce Development Board. There's a credential attached to it. There's also the New Economy Workforce Credential Grant Program. That's mouthful. And so basically, that the technical student would pay a third of the cost of the course. When they complete the course, then we get the second third. When they get their credential, we get the third third. And then we have tobacco commission grants that can sometimes cut that first third into a sixth.
Follow-up then. Are you part of the, you guys are part of the workforce investment?
All of our credential programs are approved through workforce investment.
You wouldn't happen to know who Nada Way's representative is, do you?
I do not. I don't, I'm sorry.
That's curiosity. Mr. Miskelik, can I get a question?
Well, I guess you answered some of it. When you first started this program, what were the funding strategies?
For the technical training programs?
All of it.
Or when we first started, 30-some years ago?
Exactly.
Okay, so when we started, and I wasn't here then, but my understanding is that we, the county and the town, actually, it might have been a city, and you know we've referred it, put up money, and we got some money from the state, although not much. And then we had three educational partners, Longwood, then college, and the two community colleges. So we pooled their resources, and it wasn't much of a budget, I don't think. And there were times early on when we didn't have the money to pay the light bill, and we'd have to call, I think we called Dr. Cavan. I don't know whether y'all remember John Cavan or not. And he would send us money to pay the light bill. So it was touch and go at times. Now, for our programs, what we have done is we have depended and leveraged tobacco commission seed money grants to get up and going. And so those grants only last three years long, and you're expected to be sustainable after that. And you have to match dollar for dollar, whatever they give you. So we use in-kind match for our work, but our employers will also put up equipment or funding or whatever. So that's how we made our matches. And then after we've got, you know, after three years, we're sustainable, we're able to generate revenue, and we have a foundation that can help offset some of that too. And of course, there is funding for the tuition, which is wonderful, which opens up access.
When you developed some of these programs, are they geared towards the major employers that are there, or geared towards the employers that you want to attract, or both?
For the moment, I think all but one program has really focused on current employers who have basically come knocking on our door. Betty, we can't get the training we need. We need you to help us. In fact, it was Mid-Atlantic Broadband, Microsoft, and Hewlett-Packard that came to us three or four years ago, and they were having to import from Raleigh and Richmond workers for their data warehouses. And they could not find the training that they needed with the community colleges. So they came to us and said, you know, we really want you to help us, and we'll go with you to the tobacco commission. And we did. And I just learned today that Microsoft has signed off on funding an expansion of the IT Academy. So, and they're very involved. Microsoft is very involved. They come and speak to our students, they take them on tours, they do the mock interviews. So the other program, the only program that we really didn't have employers come to us, we got involved with because the tobacco commission conducted a study that showed that there were going to be skills gaps in three careers: HVAC, IT, I'm sorry, precision machining, and mechatronics. And so we already started a welding program even before that study came out, but we opted to also start the mechatronics because we know that advanced manufacturing remains an important economic sector for us in southern Virginia. And we know that automation is real, it's coming, and it takes a higher-skilled person on the line. And this mechatronics curriculum provides Siemens credentials, which is internationally recognized.
You know, ABB, y'all supply employees for them?
We actually are doing training for them now. They have, they have come, we have worked with them in the past. Recently, they have contracted with us to do, and this is what we call customized training. So they want us to help orient their new people. So we have a cohort, this will be our second cohort of 15 students that come and work four hours, or come four hours of training at the center, and then they go to ABB. But they're new folks, and ABB has helped with some of the instruction, but most of our folks are doing that.
What is the average tuition for a student?
It depends on the program, and I hope I'm not misspeaking, but I don't think any of our programs cost more than $2,200. So it's very reasonable. And for example, in the IT Academy, that includes a high-end laptop computer. It also includes two certificates to allow you, if you don't pass the first assessment exam, you get a second try. Those things are worth $250 each. So it's very reasonable. And then if you, you know, if they qualify for the New Economy Workforce Credential Grant Program, then they're only paying a third, maybe even a sixth of that. And we also have scholarships through our foundation. Microsoft has just given us $45,000 in scholarships, and the Microsoft scholars, they get everything paid for, the whole nine yards. So it's a great relationship. I'm going to leave you with-
Yes, ma'am.
-my annual report and just a one-pager that shows the results of our economic impact. So if I could, let me ask the question. Are you folks thinking about trying, you know, to do some workforce development on your own?
Well, I think it was the gist of the question, the gist of the question was that you wanted us to do something like that here, is that correct?
Potentially. I mean, we have obvious gaps, just from anecdotal experience, being able to find a plumber or an electrician.
Yes.
I mean, some of these jobs, and we have people who need jobs, so.
Absolutely. And you know, what's so frustrating for me as someone who didn't get to come back home because there were no jobs, is the fact that we're losing people, yet there are great-paying jobs in the region, if they have the right skills. So that's why it is, you know, very rewarding for me to do this work.
So if we wanted to start some sort of program, where do we go to first?
The first thing I would suggest you do is talk to your community college, and make sure that there's not something that they can do for you. Or check with us and see if there's something we can do for you. We have an agreement with the community colleges that we do not get involved in any kind of training until they say we can't do it. So, you know, so they, we have that agreement signed off and all that. So that would be the first step. So, you know, and if for some reason you still can't get your need filled, then you might want to consider it. And I'd be willing to talk with you more if you would like.
I'll let you talk. I got somebody else from Alexandria here, so let me, once we get done, you can grab her as she goes out.
It was just a quick question. Does the program qualify for federal?
No, no, it is not. And that's why the New Economy Workforce Credential Grant Program is so important. Yeah.
Any counsel done, any questions? All right, Dr. Adams, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, and good luck.
We had to reschedule over blizzards on the-
I know, it took us almost a year for this to happen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the honorable Robert T.S. Colby, the retired judge of the 18th Judicial District, which is the city of Alexandria. And, but he's also, well, I'll let him talk for himself. He's got a program, and he got a question for the town crew.
I'll lean on that, mostly because it's been a long day.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Colby. In my spare time, after I retired, and even before, I was the, and still am, the Director of Aviation Training for the Sea Cadets. Now, the naval Sea Cadet Corps looks very much like the Boy Scouts or Civil Air Patrol or that sort of thing. There are significant differences, however. Insofar as the aviation portion of our training, it is open to everybody. It is open to any kid who wants to walk in the door, and we've even been known to take an adult or two, even as late as, as a matter of fact, we had one at 89 once from Florida. 89 is not near as old as it used to be, says I.
The judge is 81.
Yes, that's fact. I went to see the doctor today, and he said, "Why aren't you here?" I told him why, but that's another problem. The program itself, without going through all the things that put the package together, is an 88-hour course of instruction. On over two weeks' time, we keep every student, including the adults who come with us. And incidentally, if you have a child in the course, we have a special rule, but we'll get to that. You can't talk to the kid for two full weeks. The children love it, and by and large, they beat the parents anytime. But anyhow, we keep them in class from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon, two hours of study hall every night, two exams a day. You really have to want to be there. And we run 14,000-plus through the course since 1971. The, I'm going to cut out a lot of you, the timeline. You've got the training schedule. I sent it forward. You have what goes into each and every hour. They're numbered the same. And the instructors we have are all volunteers, including me. And we've done this at probably 32, 33 locations through the years, including a couple overseas. It's been quite a run, I might have to tell you that. The, it's awfully hard to synthesize all of that in one lump sum. And of course, everybody who comes here wants something from you. And I'm included, as a matter of fact. I want something from you. I want some help to find some housing and some food and a place to teach these youngsters, and I'll bring a training program here this summer. It's doable. And I think frankly, you've got resources that are buried in your infrastructure that would allow us to teach youngsters, they will be able to pass the FAA written exam when they're done, and they will get some flight time at the same time, which they can log.
The bottom line is that the judge would like the town crew to allow this program to be instructed at Crew Airport. That's basically the question for us.
I want to steal the use of your airport. That's what I want to do, pure and simple.
They would use the conference room in the front area of the airport to teach up to 30, up to 30 students.
And we can tailor-make the numbers. As a matter of fact, what I didn't tell you, we've got eight already inbound from Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Oh, wow.
They like to come east. They find that there's green all around here. And when you did, if you did Albuquerque, I mean, it has no green. That's all there is to it. And I'm not talking about money. I'm talking about going stuff. And if you want to see some interesting-looking people, you take them down to the ocean down at Virginia Beach, and they just look at the stuff coming in. They don't know what to do next. And we, you might ask, why Crew? Incidentally, several years back, I had three students from Crew. They went on to the Southern Poly Tech down in Marietta, Georgia, and they, they didn't have quite the background that some of the others have. That's unfortunate. But we don't care if they pass or not. We care if they try. And we also care because they learn things they never would have seen or heard about. When you talk about navigation, you're talking about math and trigonometry, algebra. If you're talking about weight and balance, you're talking about physics. I mean, I can go down the line with you. All of that is really stemmed by another name. And I'm going to wind down. I promise I stay within 10 minutes. I lied to him, I might add. I said I'd take only 12 minutes. Bad show on my part.
That's partly my fault, too.
No.
We were having such a good meeting, so.
But I have to tell you, I've stayed within 10 on this one. Any questions of any sort? And I'll stick around so you can-
You said, you said food and lodging.
Yes.
Okay. Number one, does it make any difference about the food, like fast food or something like it, or catered food, or?
I'm going to tell you, you know, the trouble is, I've been doing this since 1971, and I've got stories to match it all. But we never went back to Southern Poly. Why didn't you go back to an institution that wanted you? They didn't serve one drop of milk in two weeks' time to kids. Now, come on. That doesn't make sense. And I went in to see the vice president, and the president of that institution was from Fredericksburg, and I can't call her name at the moment. But, I mean, so I said, "I'm pulling them out of your school." He said, "Well..." She said, "Well, we'll fix this." I said, "When and how? Tell me how..." I tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to take them down, since I control the budget. You see, that makes it a little easier. I said, "I'm going to take them down to a-" I said, "I'm gonna take them down to a buffet." You can't do that. Our contract says you have to use the people who've putting in the material here. I said, "Is my signature on your contract?" And you heard almost as much noise as you just heard. I said, "When you show me my signature on a contract that says I can't take them anywhere, then we'll talk about it." And I walked them out the door.
The, the training would be under the umbrella of the Naval Sea Cadets?
That's correct.
Okay.
But understanding that we can tailor make this any way you like. And.
Well, I think the only concern from, from a public, from this side of the house is the insurance. You say they do have insurance?
Oh, they've got a four million dollar policy on part of it, and a one million dollar on the flying portion. And the truth of the matter is that I've already priced another policy. I can buy one for sixty-five hundred dollars, and I've got the money buried, and I'm not telling you where.
What are the age group of the students, and where would you pull the students from?
Say again?
What is the age group of the students, and where would you pull the?
Well, okay, let, let, age, has to, bottom age fifteen, and the reason is that you can't get any kind of an FAA license until seventeen, and the exams are only good for two years. So if you back it down and you get to fifteen, and that's a bit of a lie. If you go for gliders, you can get down to fourteen. But very few people fly gliders. I have a glider ticket. I don't know what you do with it, but. Let me tell you another story, but I'll leave that. So now, where do you get the students from? Is the second portion of your question. I generally get, depending on where. See, we've done, and we do this ordinarily at San Diego and Elche and New Orleans, and anywhere, anywhere on the East Coast. But I send out letters to every RJROTC unit and wherever, whatever my budget for postage is. In the early years, I had franking privileges, but that are all gone. So if you get thirty students from the Sea Cadets, or ten, or twenty, twenty from the. Incidentally, I was over to see, and you'll know the name of the man, and I'm sorry I missed it, the JROTC instructor.
Mander Clegg.
Say again?
John Clegg.
Yes. He heard, I told him about Crewe, he said, "Well, I think we have a few people we might want to send to this summer." Well, you know, you could fill up thirty people right in this room.
Yeah, I agree.
Which wouldn't be a terrible place to do it, I don't know whether you could or not. Incidentally, what's that big, big gray building over there on that corner?
Storage.
Storage. Why is it?
It's used for storage. It used to be a little technical school. It's used for storage now. It's flat out empty. I mean, other than John.
You know, the juxtaposition between the two places would be marvelous, but. There's more than one location locally I think we could do something with, and I'd like to give it a try.
With that in mind, are there any other questions?
In terms of lodging, what are you?
Yeah, that was my question.
Looking for.
I put them in tents in my time. I've put them on the floors of the gymnasium. That works fairly well. The real cutting problem here is showers. And you just can't take a fire hose and clean these people down. It's a great story, but it's lousy public relations. So you, you get those kinds of problems that you creep in. I don't know, did you, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Did you see the list of locations where we did this?
I have not.
They haven't seen it.
Say again?
They have not seen it.
Oh, what a shame. I'm sorry.
A ball, man.
Oh, wow. Choose your poison, I mean. I've, I've done it at, at the College of Santa Fe, and, and I'm, I'm frequently asked, "Well, can they stay home and then come in on a day, day basis?" And the answer is, "Yes, but it doesn't work." What happens is, they go home and they watch television. You wouldn't know a thing about that. I cheat, because I looked up your bio, you understand. But, I mean, you, and to prove my point, I had a physics teacher from TC Williams High School in Alexandria, and a Second Lieutenant Marine Corps. This, we were doing this at, down at Quantico, and neither of those two men passed. The kids did well. They didn't, because they did what I say the kids would do. Went home and watched, or read a book, or who knows what they did. But if you can't get a high school physics teacher to pass this course, you need to get rid of his credentials.
Now, each student has a, has a fee. They have to pay a tuition fee, and that covers their meals and whatnot. So you get the contract meals out. The real challenge is lodging, from what we.
Well, it's like everything else. I can eat the food. If I had to truck it in from picket, I could eat the food. But, you know, you could, lunches are easy. You go to the store, you get cold cuts, they make their own sandwich or something. Practice, not too bad. You could eat a dry cereal, that's what I eat in the morning. But, and then dinner is a little more dicey.
But that's, that's an issue for the organizers. The only issue for us is whether we'll allow them to use the airport.
And I'd also like, I have to tell you, I'm looking for help, like you gave me the other day. Hey, talk to somebody. Talk to this person. For example, you can't work them all week long and not give them some recreation. You could use the pool at the country club. You could use the lake out at Twin, whatever the name is.
She's up next, that's park manager.
Don't you dare leave. Colonel John Atterbury called your shop yesterday and reported this morning that he found somebody on a Sunday afternoon to talk to.
Yeah, very often, seven days a week, except the Christmas.
Well, there you go.
But they do have a campground.
Well, I'll tell you why I don't, I'll tell you why I'm resisting that.
Yes.
Because if we're gonna make this a community project, it's gotta look like it belongs here.
Yes, sir.
And that's a PR thing. Perfectly good location. Venue's fine. Doesn't accomplish what we want to accomplish.
Okay, with that in mind, is there any further discussion amongst council or a motion to approve use of the airport for Naval Sea Cadet training?
Tell them the timeframe you said. Probably twenty July through four August. I looked that up today, mostly because I have people coming in.
It's not gonna, you're training, say for instance, you do all your training tonight there, it's not gonna affect what few people that fly in tonight, it's not gonna affect them all.
Okay.
You've got twelve aircraft out there, single engine, you've got one multi-engine, and one Oprah light out there. And I spent several hours out there, and I didn't see a single movement. Now, what I would say, and not being, just being moderately ugly, it's an underused facility. I can quit, with a little luck, and if I could get some of those people who have aircraft out there to come aboard, we could run this thing all summer long. I used to run them consecutively and concurrently all across the country. It's a question of, I need the, not your physical help. I need your, the help that says, you need, give me the list of the fourteen people you've got out there, or the twelve.
Do you need that, actually?
Well, I mean, but, but that's the kind of thing you need. Give me the names of the restaurants, so I can knock on their doors. What else? Give me the name of the park that I get, get them to, get them to be cleaned up on weekends.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Any other questions? Is there further discussion or a motion? I can't make a motion, I'm the mayor.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, we need to make a motion.
Okay.
I believe that we do everything that we can to, to support it, because I think, why not? I make a motion that we.
Approve the use of the Crewe Airport for Naval Sea Cadet training?
Just one last thing, there aren't any regulatory things that we got to?
We don't think so.
Okay, perfect.
It's all cleared through Department of Aviation.
I'm running this thing a little creation.
Okay, great.
The only concern that I have from my perspective is fuel. They're gonna need fuel, and we just have such a limit to supply it, and we.
How many gallons in your tank?
Three thousand.
Ample.
Yeah, but. We'd have to, we'd have to, I don't know how much you would use.
I can tell you exactly. I could give you a pen, a dirty pencil on this one. Let's say we run one, let's say we run two aircraft, and it's a little light. Five gallons an hour to make it ease in calculation. So there's ten gallons an hour, and you're running six gallons, six hours a day. All of a sudden, you're running thirty gallons a day, times ten days, three hundred gallons.
Okay. That, that's just my only concern. When we buy, we have to buy a split mode, and sometimes it takes a little work to get it in here.
I'll find it. Never mind. I have a guy who knows how to do logistical acquisition. That's known as stealing.
Come on.
I will second that.
All right, so we have, we have a motion and a second to approve the use of the Crewe Airport for Naval Sea Cadet aviation training from twenty July to four August. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, by like sign. None, motion carries.
You can't lose them all.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
It's very exciting.
Next up is Park Manager Veronica Flick, excuse me, from Twin Lakes State Park.
Good evening. As the mayor said, I'm Veronica Flick. I'm the park manager at Twin Lakes State Park. I just want to take this opportunity to introduce myself and possibly reintroduce Virginia State Parks and Twin Lakes State Park. With that being said, I do have some information for you, if you don't mind me giving it to you.
We love Virginia State Parks.
I have a good feeling you all have seen one of these, but I'm gonna give it to you anyway. By the numbers and then a little bit of information for, from us specifically. You're welcome. I came from Natural Bridge State Park, got here in late November. So I have been lucky to be here a few months, and hopefully a few more years after that.
Can I steal?
Sure. You're welcome.
And the lady right behind me, that's Mrs. Yank, she is, she is the Chairman of the, or President of the Crewe Council Chamber of Commerce. That's the other individual I wanted you to meet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I have your information?
Sure. I have a couple more, if anybody wants one, too. So just to start with introducing Virginia State Parks, like I said, I have a good feeling you all may have seen this. Not I have extras, if you would like them. This is a nice little flyer that's by the numbers. It kind of just shows what all Virginia State Parks has to offer. Some of the interesting things is eleven, so as you all know, Twin Lakes has one of those eleven. There's an ice cream, number of ice creams sold. Fifteen thousand ice creams have been sold in a year in Virginia State Parks. Twenty-three thousand hot dogs. Down at the bottom, that yellow bar is my favorite numbers, of course. Talking about the amount of visitors, so almost ten and a half million visitors coming per year to Virginia State Parks. That economic impact of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. And then the great number, that third number is the, every third, or every dollar that is spent in a Virginia State Park equals out to about thirteen dollars that filters back into that community. So with that, I have some information. The blue sheet is about Twin Lakes specifically. And like I said, I'm kind of reintroducing you, so I won't go through all of it for your, your leisure of reading. So it talks a little bit about the park history, some statistics about, you know, what our infrastructure is. On the bottom in the back, as well, is some of our opportunities and challenges that we, we face, and probably a lot of state parks face as well. But I do want to draw your, your eye down to the, the middle bottom, where we've got some bullet sized numbers. So our specific annual attendance is one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. These are off of two thousand and eighteen calendar year. We, of course, run on the fiscal year, but I've pulled the calendar year of two thousand and eighteen. Our annual revenue was four-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, specifically for Twin Lakes. Our budget, of course, was four-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. And then my favorite number is that annual overnight revenue of two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. Why that's my favorite is that's all people that are coming from out of the area to visit Twin Lakes State Park. So that's including both the cabin and the camping overnights. So that little great number of, that's four-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five total bookings for the calendar year of two thousand and eighteen. That's different nights, different groups booking those, those cabins and rentals. What that means is those people are staying in the community for, staying in Twin Lakes for over one night or a night. And so they are going out into the community. So some of the goals we have in the upcoming year, as well as into the future, is to kind of, number one, bringing more people in, so creating more of an education, because, you know, Twin Lakes does have such great history. We just, we have been a member, but we're about to get our official signs, the Civil Rights and Education Trail, FLLM Act. So we're doing some more educational things, and that's our plan, as well as educating the, the visitors on what is in the area. So we, we always have had a nice little, like, blur of things in our cabins, from what I can tell, you know, the last couple months. But we, we're gonna grow that, and we have the space in our cabins to kind of create own little stopping points within your own cabin, and then our camper packets as well, and in our office, where people can pick up flyers or what's going on in the area. We are gonna create a monthly, we are already creating what's going on in the area monthly, just, you know, eight and a half by eleven sheet for our overnight guests. So that's just something I wanted to, you know, talk about, and let you all know that that is our goal coming up, and.
In fact, when I ran into Ms. Flick, at the Virginia Alliance Consortium, one of the questions she had is, did we have something from the Chamber of Commerce or a handout that we could put out? And of course, we had the South Side Magazine, so we gave her plenty of those. And Jeff Clements happened to be there, and he had much more in the car, so she got plenty to, I guess, put in the cabins.
Exactly. And there's anyone coming out? I spoke with Jeff this summer, so we're gonna.
Good.
The biggest increase.
Good, because that, those, those people that stay overnight, they're looking for restaurants to eat at, and we're a lot closer than Faribault is. It's a lot easier to get to, I would say, because all you gotta do is go out one way and down, hang a ladder. It's, it's, we've got a very long relationship with Twin Lakes, and everybody that goes there has to come through Crewe, for the most part. If they're coming from Northern Virginia or the tidewater area, they all have to flow through here. So it's very important to us. And I like to say, Virginia State Parks are a critical part of the rural tourism infrastructure, the destination points, and that's why they're so important to keep. And we want to thank you for that. Now, I did have a question. You guys have got a sign shop now, right?
We do not. The, the state parks does.
The parks does, yeah. I've got some signs that we may want made, and I'd like to be able to talk to somebody about that. Can you email me some contact information?
Sure, I'll let my local department report it, too.
We, we're keen on tourism, obviously. As part of the Virginia Alliance membership, we're trying to, we're working on developing a Revolutionary War Heritage Trail and based on the Tarleton Raid, and then we've got local stuff that we can plug in as well that would give people something to read when they come here. There's a DAR, local DAR, and it's got some money that they are going to consider giving us to help pay for a sign on Peter Francisco. I don't know where that's at right now, but we'll pursue that as well. But that's the sign I need, that template. And then, of course, I can develop some signs for the parks that you guys can play with for that period as well.
Yeah, definitely.
Any questions for Mrs. Flick? Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Doctor.
And let us know what we can do to help.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you, thank you. Alright, Ms. Christian.
So I'm with the Quebec Chamber and you know that we're trying to give our park decorations to you, so. I mean, that's what it boils down to. We really are looking to give this project to you all.
Alright, you have, uh, the letter from the Chamber. Do you want to think on it or do you want to act on it?
I'll have to think on it, please.
Alright. The town allows the Chamber to use part of the park for the shed because the Chamber stores its decorations there. How does that, does that come into play at all?
Well, they, they, they want to keep the shed, but they said that we can store the lights in the shed.
Well, the.
But I guess the, uh. The issue is then that the Chamber has a shed there for, for what purpose?
To store his Christmas decorations. That's the only reason why they bought her.
The Chamber made the stipulation, though, that they were not donating the.
We're not donating the shed, we're donating the decorations. But in truth, the shed was purchased to store the decorations, so we're still willing to store the decorations. We just don't want, I think we're looking to not be responsible for anymore, the decorating of the park.
Would the town get some sort of a long-term agreement for use of the shed? Because right now, the, uh, town can store the decorations there, but next year, if the Chamber wants to use it for something else, is that?
Question, please.
Well, I, I could certainly take that back to the Chamber and, you know, and I'm, I'm, don't see why that would be a problem, but I know I can't speak for the, for the whole group.
And, um, I guess the CDYRA also uses the, uh, shed or storing their?
No, the only thing that, the only thing that's stored in that shed is, are the park decorations.
Okay, so we didn't get that.
Truth be known, we, we get maybe say five volunteers every year from the Chamber to decorate the park. We don't get much help and, you know, every single one of us are getting older and it's hard. It's, um, it's, it's a big undertaking and it's hard, it's difficult.
Right, the town forces have been willing to help, they just can't jump at a moment's notice. They have to have some lead-up time, a dig, time, place, kind of, so they can get it on their work.
Well, I mean, we worked together well this year, I think, uh, you played and we did fine, but, um, I, I don't know how the Chamber would vote if you guys didn't want it. I can tell you that I'm going to vote to not move forward anymore with the Chamber putting up the decorations. It's two, it's, it's a huge undertaking for a small Chamber with little help. And so I don't know how everybody else will vote and I don't make the final vote, but I can tell you right now that as Chamber President, I'm voting to remove ourself from being responsible for that anymore.
Okay, can you check with the Chamber at the next meeting then and see if they would be, if they would entertain the long-term lease, uh, of the building?
Long-term.
Or use of the building. In writing.
And, um.
For what, what looks like long-term forever for you, or ten years, or three years, or five years?
As the town is responsible for decorating the park, if we're responsible.
And I don't know if Wade is, how Wade is with, um, lighting sign. But is there anyone in the town who has that creative?
We wanted to let Tiffany do it.
So move, he's employed. It looks to me like.
I think that if the town, I think that the Chamber, based on everything I'm hearing, and the Chamber is more than willing to, to assist or to try to help you. It's a huge difference.
I think, I think the labor is the.
The labor is the issue.
I do see a, a good plan to be the, if, um, the Chamber and town, whoever is really gonna own the stuff, doesn't make much difference. But if the Chamber and town, well ahead of time, and the Chamber, I haven't done it every time, but we normally start when, the first of November. To me, it makes sense just to set up a schedule. Weather permitting, on the second Wednesday in November, someone will be there to be the liaison and town workers could be provided. I mean, I just, and then move forward. But it has to be something that's planned so that the labor can be planned. And I, for one, would not like to, um, I don't think it's good use of taxpayers' money to ask people to come out on the weekend and get overtime, although maybe some employees would like that. But I don't think that's, that's necessary at all, it just takes some planning.
Well, then, then comes the issue that people from the Chamber are all, are primarily business owners and the weekend is the time that they have, which is in conflict with what the town would want to do by working during the week. I agree with you, I mean, why would we want to pay the town overtime to come in on the weekend? But bringing the two groups together is, you know, fortunately this year, I mean, I own my own business and I have the kind of business where, where I can just leave. And when Wade called and said, hey, can you come over, I was able to drop what I was doing.
I think there's enough people in the Chamber, though, that are familiar enough with it that some sort of schematic could be drawn.
Sure.
Okay, I'm, uh, I'm fine with this, contingent upon a perpetual use agreement for the shed.
Okay. Is anyone?
Well, we're, we're just gonna table it until we have that work.
Anything else, Ms. Christian?
Well, no, I was only given permission to talk about that, but I did have other things, but, uh, one other thing, but do you want me to do it now?
You might as well, you're standing there.
Well, but it's, but I'm just.
Is it for the Chamber or for something?
No, it's just, are you gonna call for personal?
No, no, you're, you're.
I don't want to intermingle the two.
Okay.
Have a seat then.
Have a seat then.
We'll call you.
Are there any other delegations from the public? Fire away.
Do we have any ordinances in town about, about chained up dogs? That get left out in the freezing cold all the time and are really, it's really cruel. I see a lot of dogs in the summer and the winter being chained and no one ever comes out and looks at them. And, you know, these dogs, you walk past them and they're so love-starved, they come at you with their teeth and.
That's more of an animal control issue. Uh, our concern is if they get loose and threaten somebody, that's our biggest concern. There, there is an animal, I mean, a dog ward, we have two of them now in town, or in the county. If you see something.
But wouldn't that be like maybe a town ordinance to take care of these animals?
I don't recall seeing that in the ordinances.
It's an animal control.
Issue, yeah.
Somebody would need to call, call it in, you know, from.
You'd have to call the sheriff's office.
Yeah, I get, my heart just goes out to some of these poor.
Well, there are, um, state laws and animal cruelty, um, prevention laws that the animal control people are well aware of.
That's what they do. I mean, that, that's their, part of their function.
So go to them.
Yes, ma'am. Call the sheriff's office, they'll dispatch somebody. Any other delegations from the public? Seeing none, we move on to consent calendar. Managers on the consent calendar, considered routine, will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council. It may be voted all separately. You have before you, or you've had in your packet, the minutes of the town council meeting held on the fourteenth of January, the bill sheet, and you have the additions before you. Do we have a motion to approve?
It's gonna move second.
A motion on the second. All in favor, any further discussion?
With the addition.
You, you have a question?
No, okay. With the addition.
Right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed by a like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Town managers report.
Okay. I had included in your packet, uh, a narrative that I had John Rico. I hope you've had time to look at it and, uh, I know it's a lot to take in and try to understand, but, uh, basically, over the past few years, we've been struggling with somewhat with some of the treatment process at our sewer plant. While it hasn't caused any major problems, it's becoming an issue. And we're a little bit worried about compliance down the road. Treatment with sewer starts at the head of the plant and there's really no good way to say this, but we'd be surprised what comes in to the sewer plant, other than the things that you already know come in. There's more debris, uh, such as rags. How they get in the, in the system, I don't know. Uh, I've seen bottles in the system, I've seen jugs. Uh, there's only a couple of ways that could happen, uh, that I know of, and that's somebody putting them in manholes, situations like that. Regardless, uh, there is a great deal of amount of grit and dirt that comes in. And all of this, common sense would tell you, if you're using pumps and you're using impellents to move the water, you're gonna wear your pumps out eventually and it's, it's a very costly maintenance project. We've been kind of putting it off, but that's why we have reserve accounts. You know, we often talk about what we have in reserve, now's the time and I feel like we've got to use it to, to take care of some of this. There were a couple of pieces of equipment in there that you noticed. The lesser one, ironically, is probably the most important. It's still a lot of money, but it's the, uh, it's the change, it's, it's the alder part that you saw in there. It's fifty-nine thousand five hundred. What that does is get the rags and it's, it's, just imagine the big alder. It pulls this stuff out, coming in the head end, dumps it in a dumpster, and then the dumpster is carried to the, to the end. All of that stuff stacks up in these holding facilities at, at the sewer plant. And over a period of time, it's, it's probably fifty percent capacity in some of these areas, which also contributes to, um, possible oil flows, because we don't have the capacity that we're gonna have. So I pretty much went out on my limb, I told John to go ahead and order that particular unit. That's the fifty-nine five, um, that will come out of the sewer drain. The other portion is the hundred and. That's more or less the grit collection part of, of the system. I think we need that. I think that we probably have enough in reserves if we cheat a little bit. The full sum, say, out of the work, tap the reserve and pay for that. I want to run this by everybody, but, you know, I talk all the time about, you know, our plants, you think, the sewer plant is still fairly new, but it's twenty-seven years old. It's a very volatile area, it deals with a lot of problems, chemically and, you know, that, what they're dealing with. Sewer plant is, is how is sewer plant, Ron. More than, I mean, uh, water plant.
Oh, water plant, yeah.
All of this stuff, nothing lasts forever. And, uh, these are very important things. We've just, we've just had to replace a motor at the water plant that had burned out. We paid thousands of dollars for these things, but you have to have them, we have to have them to operate. So anyway, I wanted to bring all of that to your attention. Once we get these things in place, then we've got to clean these areas that I was talking about, which is another expensive situation, but we can't do it. We just don't have the equipment to do it. It, it'll take professionals to come in and clean these areas out. May recall, we had to do this, some, something like it in our lagoons. Fortunately, we've been able to do that in-house now, it saved a lot of money, but, uh, we can't do it at the sewer plant. All of this stuff costs money and we've got to do it for treatment. It's like, uh, you mentioned, it's been several months ago, we, we all approved a garbage truck. The purchase of a garbage truck, which we understand will be given about a month. So we're gonna be soliciting banks, we're financing the garbage truck.
Question, on the hundred-twenty-six three, do we have any idea how much of taxes that would be? And would we get it tax-free, because we're government?
Yeah, that's tax-free.
Alright.
That is tax-free.
Okay. So at this time, you need a motion to allocate a hundred seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars out of reserve funds for sewage treatment, plant equipment as, uh.
The thing that I can find.
Are there other funding options?
Other than borrow and lend?
On that previous page, it says all those excluded items. Do we have a bottle park on, on that, because that looks like a pretty good deal?
That's, that's the cleaning part.
The, the, all of it?
I don't know. That, that, I've heard numbers from forty, thirty, forty thousand. And we're gonna try to figure out a way to do that, but I, I honestly don't feel like we can do it.
Can you wait until budget, the next budget?
I would say it's first part, no.
Fifty-nine five.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that we have allocated.
That, that to me is critical. Yes, it could.
So the sets of council, they want to allocate fifty-nine five and, and hold off for the rest?
Well, let's vote on the fifty-nine five and then discuss the other. So I move to allocate fifty-nine five.
Alright, do we have a motion to allocate fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for?
From the reserve.
Out of the reserve account?
Second.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, uh, all opposed by a like sign. Motion carries.
Just real quick, in case you hear about this, uh, we'll let everybody know. We're having some serious issues at the cemetery and it basically deals with, with, uh, sewer technology. In the past, way before all of us, these, these graves were dug by hand. Usually two men came in and dug a grave, took care of that situation and when they finished, they packed it in and they were gone. And you, no one would hardly know they were there. These guys now are using equipment, heavy equipment. They're coming in with, uh, diggers and backhoes. And because, I guess because of the wet such, well, being so wet is part of the problem, but, uh, they leave the large ruts, tire tracks. But the, the bigger problem, I think, is the destroying some of the monuments. They're driving over top of things, they're cracking them, uh, chipping them, and believe me, people notice.
Who's doing this?
Well.
They say it's two, um, of the.
Well, let me finish and then we'll, you know. So, and then, of course, they're packing up and leaving and we're left holding the bag. And I've had several people come in complaining, uh, went over and looked at one one day and I agree with the guy, uh, they chipped some of the cornerstone. They had a nice stand of grass there where a relative had been buried and it was now covered in red dirt because they just threw the dirt out. In, in, anyway, what I want to do, and I'm getting ready to do, is load a boom on these funeral directors. And I'm gonna get some backlash, I know I am. But I want, I want everybody to understand what's going on here now. How they, my initial thinking is no more equipment in the cemetery, go back to the way you used to do it. Whether that's reasonable or not, I don't know. If I said that and they said, we can't do it that way, then they gotta come up with a way to fix the problems, take care of them. We don't have to deal with the grave digging, we shouldn't have to deal with the person that actually digs the graves. It should be the funeral director. And, uh, it's just, it's getting to be a big problem. And the damage is, is noticeable. And I'm not nitpicking, it's noticeable. And, uh, I wanted to let y'all know. I've been trying to figure out the best way to do this, if I send a letter out, I've got to send it pretty much to all of the different funeral directors. I think they need to take responsibility if they're not willing to, to hand in.
Can we charge them for damages?
They need to take care of that. And, you know, it creates more work for us, but an inspection before and after, uh, needs to take place. Any damage needs to be noted, uh, and they need, they need to take care of it. So I just want to let y'all. So I just want to let y'all know that that's gonna happen. I'll just pass this around. This is some options that Tessie provided for. The church bale situation. And that's all I have, if somebody has any questions. And this would be in addition to our noise ordinance.
Okay, so these are suggested, these recommended, yeah, additions to the noise ordinance.
I also like the idea of allowing it, allowing one of the churches or a couple of churches to have their chimes certain points of each day, noon and five, something like that. Or just go back to college?
Oh, yeah.
In Sydney?
Yes.
Of course, nothing you see in here talks about the playing of humans and that type of thing.
All right, what is the, what is the feeling, council, are you an act on this tonight, or hold it for next month? Okay. Do we have a motion? For any one of these additions to the noise ordinance? We don't have to advertise this, do we? So if you have a section that you prefer?
With the church bells and chimes sound generated by churches, what it says, could be viewed like funeral plays.
Okay, so do we have a motion then to insert or advertise for an amendment to our current noise ordinance that would include, and I quote, "church bells or chimes, sounds generated by church bells and chimes during regular church services, during funerals held at the church, and during weddings held at the church," are exempt from this ordinance?
I would also include hymns no longer than one minute at noon and five.
Okay.
So we would...
He's amended it. Hymns no longer than one minute in duration allowed at noon?
One minute, five minutes is what he said.
No, no, no.
Allowed at noon and...
Noon and five.
And five, five P M.
Well, if they, if they go to chant, they go chant at noon and six.
Okay, either way?
That's what, that's what, is that it? That's what they used to do.
Okay, noon, six, five.
Well, the chimes are fine, we talked about, yeah.
Right.
Well, they don't complain, yeah.
And we approve it.
Okay, so the amended piece says that we will, we will amend the ordinance, noise ordinance, to include church bells or chimes, sounds generated by church bells and chimes during regular church services, during funerals held at the church, and during weddings held at the church are exempt from this ordinance. Hymns no longer than one minute are allowed at noon at six P M.
So does that mean the chimes can go for a minute too?
Yep.
Okay.
Means the chimes, you probably give as long as you want to, because he just...
Well, by heels, unless we want to add one of those that Tessie suggests, duration of the bells and chimes, five chimes, four for thirty seconds. Is it the details we have to get a...
I wouldn't add it, unless we have a complaint.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, with that in mind, I need a motion to authorize advertising this, so we can amend the ordinance as it currently exists.
So moved?
We moved it?
I did.
All right. Motion. Mr. Smith, second? I need a second.
Suck. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, I like so. All right. All right, good, so three, four, four to one. Okay. Motion carries. The town attorney is absent, so you have another meeting tonight. As far as the mayor's report, everything is in the report. The only thing that I would bring up is the Beeler Lot Council. We've had two bids on the Beeler Lot. Council needs to determine if we should consider these two bids, or to advertise the property in question for public bidding to broaden the potential bid pool. By law, council may only choose to consider the two bids that have been submitted by folks that have been interested.
Make a motion, we bid it out.
Motion to bid out.
Do we know now?
Yes.
Was I being, should we, should we discuss it in the executive session?
They just turned it into pieces of paper to you, is all they did.
Yeah.
We never advertised for bids or anything like that.
That's it, we never advertised for bids. Both parties came in and made separate offers. One is significantly higher than the other, but...
Part of, part of the problem here is, council, you may remember, said, "What is fair market value?" I don't know the terminology, but there was a question about, "How did you arrive at fair market value?" Tax value is twelve five.
Neither one, neither one of these is tax value.
Strictly speaking, fair market value is whatever someone is willing to pay for.
I just wanted to be sure. Did y'all knew the tax value was twelve?
Tax assessment really doesn't have anything to do with the fair market value.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so Mr. Knight made a motion to advertise for public bidding. Do we have a second?
Thank you. The problem is then it would be open for public bidding.
Yes?
Correct.
That is a problem. We don't have to do that.
Can we say this until after executive session?
Yes.
So we can...
Yes, yes.
We draw the motion.
All right.
I withdraw my second.
I like to say that.
Okay, then, ma'am, we've got a committee report, Spanish committee.
Everything is in order. Budget comes soon.
Personnel committee. Community development, Wendy is not here, Mr. Bradley is no longer with us, and I think I've kind of briefed on the Virginia Alliance. So we're, we're working towards developing a tour, another one of those heritage tours, to bring tourists in. Then, ma'am, continuing business?
Mayor, I'd like to thank the town manager and employees. We met with town manager, Tony and I took a tour with Jackie Zeta Westby, the librarian, head librarian of Nodway County Library. And got quite a few things accomplished. The lighting, trash can outside situation has been improved. Made sure the exit signs and doors were repaired. I was supposed to call the county office today and set up some sort of meeting with Mr. Roy, but I got to doing my taxes and forgot about it, so I'll call him tomorrow. And hopefully, we still have, we have, now what's left are the long range concerns. So that's why we'd like to meet with the county. We think we're probably gonna have to take a look at the roof of that bathroom back there, continues. Something's going on up in the roof. So we don't know, but, so that's where we'll have to go next, and coordinate with friends of the library and see what we can do.
Very good. Kudos to the town manager and the town team for meeting with the librarian. Any other continuing business? Any good business?
We've got a couple things.
Yes, sir.
Something to put on the plate, probably this spring, we need to get over the herd of profit. And go follow through with the, follow through with these, the salt pumps on the east end. On completion of that, we could, well, and then the next thing is doing a smoke test on the west end, see how the conditions are. And then I weigh, I talk to Wade something about a town cleanup. And as you know, the last Friday was the last day of picking up leaves. And I've seen a lot of people's yards that normally get their leaves, like, could not get in the yard because of the virus, so, well. Maybe exercise, maybe one, one week in March, or first April. Just designate that, just to, just to hook up the leaf machine.
Okay.
I don't know how you know, just, there's something just put on, put on the plate for, you know, or, but then, then salt pumps, we need to jump on that, we need to get it over with.
Okay, can the town manager coordinate all of these things here? All right. Any other new business?
One quick thing. What are our thoughts on summer interns for things like our social media, creating marketing materials, providing support throughout our museum over the summer? I also have on the list helping the Chamber with the chicken festival, that may not be something. Helping the PD with the national...
The chicken festival is not moving forward this year.
That's unfortunate.
We'll come back to that.
Researching grants and also creating a sustainable plan for improvement of our library.
Okay, you're paying for it.
That's a good question. Well, what are the general thoughts on the idea, and then I can go back and create a more specific budget?
We need a defined job description, they would have to have somebody to answer to.
Correct.
I wouldn't mind putting them over in the railroad park, because I know they, y'all are in volunteer shortage, is that right? If we had a summer intern, would that, somebody that could actually work out of that building from eight to five during the day, would that be acceptable to the folks at the railroad park today?
You would probably have to run through jury fuller, but they are definitely needing help.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Because all the members over there are getting old. And we always work two people together for their safety.
How many officers are there? I mean, the board, the boards?
And it's seven, but I think maybe we've, I know we've lost one just recently. Nancy Whelan moved to other county. So I don't think, I don't think they've got the five or six over there now.
Okay, we need to have a meeting anyway, so we can try to resolve that issue and, and work, think long-term to keep that place open. And we need to kind of leverage the talent we've got, such as the Chamber intern opportunity, and think of that, don't you?
Where were you thinking of recruiting the interns to?
Local colleges.
Where did she move to?
Let me, let me ask Ramfless this idea out a little bit, and have something to everyone for the next meeting.
Well, let's do that, but we're gonna make it an intern opportunity. We want, we want clearly defined job description. We want, we want, we want...
Deliverables.
Deliverables, but also, I mean, the intern's gotta get something out of it too, it's not just somebody that's coming in to babysit.
Right.
All right?
Perfect.
Good. Anything else?
I don't want to get into a discussion about this, but we should think about having the chicken festival somewhere else, like the airport.
Right, well, that's, that's kind of what I was gonna bring up. Just from a Chamber perspective, I, I had recently been notified that the chicken festival venue is no longer available to us because of...
Because part of Southside Electric doesn't want alcohol at the bar anymore. It's an alcohol, it's an alcohol issue.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
Well, you know, you know, we ain't got a fork in it there.
Only thing is, all we gotta do is clean, we own the property, all we gotta do is...
Well, before you guys move too far ahead on the chicken festival, we're, we really have to take, as Chamber, we really have to take a good hard look at the numbers. We need to do some number crunching, because I'm new, but based on what I'm seeing, what I know, the chicken festival has been a loss for us for three years.
A financial loss.
And we cannot absolutely, and if I'm correct in my thinking, which I could be wrong, but I don't think I am, to be honest with you, it's been fairly substantial. So we really would either have to, as a Chamber, we'd have to look at really crunching the numbers better to make sure that it was at least a break even, you know, but going in whole without looking. It was Johnny Weston, Bill Foss, and I don't know who the third person was, wasn't there one other person in?
Stevie and Lynn.
Well, Lynn wasn't super involved last year, was she?
Not, not that Lynn, the other Lynn.
Lynn Elliott, yeah, it was Lynn Elliott, okay. But based on what I'm seeing and whatnot, I just, I, I, we need to have to do some rule number crunching in addition to the location being an issue.
When do y'all have another meeting for work sessions?
The first week in March, yeah.
Yeah, so we meet on the first Wednesday.
Now, we're having a finance meeting, I was hoping to pull them together this Sunday, but Bill's gonna be out of town, so we're gonna, we need to pull together a finance meeting, so we're gonna be looking at that very carefully.
All right, well, maybe I'll try to come to the first Wednesday in March, and let's talk, let's talk chicken festival, because I'm with my councilman Reed on this. We have an opportunity. We've got something that's in place, it's a, you don't have to have it as big as it used to be in the glory days, but we've got this property over here now that's been transferred to us. The Lubbock provides plenty of parking, we've got a parking lot right at the top of the hill at Park Avenue that belongs to the town. You've got parking on the street, so you could get, you know, you could get several hundred people in that area, that wooded area behind the Lubbock. All we have to do is go in with a bulldozer and clean out some of that stuff, and make it pretty, which we haven't had a chance to do.
Is alcohol a problem for the town? I mean, that's a drinking event, so we can't, he's sitting here shaking his head. If alcohol is a problem for the town, then that becomes an issue, because the chicken festival isn't gonna be the chicken festival without beer and wine.
Sure, why, is it illegal, or just they have to have an A B C light?
The school system owns the park, which may be...
Nope, nope, they only, they only own the park.
They own the Lubbock and they own beside it.
Yeah, but we're not drinking in the parking lot. So you're drinking on the town property. So that's the question.
Lesson is, beer in there in town square.
Yeah. So it's gotta be legal, we just have to have an A B C light.
The town attorney?
All right, we'll figure that out, but the thing is, we've got that potential.
How many people do you think you could handle in that area, Lubbock safely?
I don't know. See, that's, that's a question. I've seen that parking lot packed before, but I don't know how many people it would be, so that's a question.
Or the, someone mentioned the airport.
Yeah, on the other side, not, not at the airport proper, we own land on the other side of the runway, that, that, plenty of parking down there.
I mean, I've been to several festivals at airports, and it seems like to me there's ample room for anything you want to do.
Yeah, it's a mile long.
Is alcohol a problem at the airport?
We own the airport, right?
Yeah.
Alcohol would be the issue.
We'll have to, we'll inquire, but, but it's, I don't, let's not kill it yet.
Well, if you can be mastermind and figure out how to revive it, I'm sure that the Chamber would be in tune to that. However, I mean, it's been a fairly largely proposed proposition, excuse me?
Do you know a dollar figure that they lost?
Tiffany would, the first year, they made money, right?
Well, we don't know that, how much?
I don't know. I know it was a profit the first year.
It was a profit the first year, which was rolled over, and the two subsequent years were...
The weather. That was weather.
Weather.
And a really expensive van.
When you pay the... A donation that was, or a portion of the proceeds that were given to an organization to do a job that I do not feel like they did very well at, I feel like that took a big hit.
Okay.
Well, I just, I move that we put it into a committee or something, that we study it further.
Well, by the next time, the Chamber will have a better handle.
By the next, by the first meeting in March, I think the Chamber should have a good handle on what realistically happened with the numbers.
Okay, so rather than put it in committee, let's see, let's see what happens in March. I'll come to the March meeting and sit down. Okay, so rather than put it in committee, let's see, let's see what happens in March, I'll come to the March meeting and, and sit down, so I can collect, get it.
Okay, it's the first Wednesday in March.
Right, what time?
Six.
Where at? Here, okay.
And until that time, would the chamber consider ending advertising that it's been canceled?
Well, the ads have already gone out, so the damage is already done, there won't be any more ads going out, but they've already, what's gone out has already gone out.
Okay.
So, um, I, I can't stop what's-
Sure.
And I might be, it was gonna come out in Crewe Burkhold, or in the Burkhold, the Burkhold newspaper, I might be able to stop him, I don't know for sure, but, um, I might have passed his deadline.
Yeah, I think you missed it.
I, I wouldn't recommend that anyway, because the chamber approved to- To get, to put that out. This is true, well, they, they approved, the chamber approved putting it in the Crewe Burkhold jour, journal. The, the chamber didn't say anything about the Burkhold, the Little Burkhold newspaper, and he was just picking up on what came out of the Crewe Burkhold jour, journal, so I don't know that we have anything, you know, other than I might be able to stop him from, you know, I don't know. But that was his own thing.
All right, with my personal privilege, Mr. Reed, Mr. Smith.
Crewe Garden Club meets on, uh, February nineteenth at two o'clock at the Crewe Community Center. Our esteemed mayor will be our guest speaker.
Is he gonna make some flowers up for you?
No, he's not gonna make flowers.
I can tie anything into military history, even agriculture.
What day was that?
No comment.
Nineteenth.
No comment.
January nineteenth, two o'clock?
One thing I would like to see, night before last, they had a poll at the railroad museum, they had to call me to find out who a contact was, because they couldn't get him parked and checked. Somebody needs to take care of that, so if they do have a problem, you can give it to me.
We need an updated list, poison contact is approved.
Well, Sheriff, I'll need you, because they ended up doing a call, so they were calling me when I was trying to type on the computer, you know how that is.
Oh, you were.
Call Terry and get an updated list, give it to Sheriff.
I tried.
Um, Crewe England was a great place, I could strongly recommend it, if anyone goes, it's actually pretty, uh, pretty big, it's about seventy thousand people, you know, in the city. Um, though, the funny part was, I got off the, I got off the plane to Manchester and, uh, walked up to the, um, the security customs and such, and a woman asked me, she said, "Where are you going?" I said, "Well, I'm going to Crewe," she said, "Why are you going to Crewe England?" And, well, "Why are you going to Crewe?" No one missed Crewe. Sounded familiar, but, uh, um, but, uh, and, and then they proceeded to interrogate me more because, uh, sketchy feelings.
It looked like a terrorist, yeah.
Exactly, because no one missed Crewe, um, but definitely I recommend it, and I'm happy to share the pictures and whatever, sometimes that's not tonight.
Are there any flowers in there? The garden club would like that. Schedule that.
All right, good deal, uh, any public comment at this point, questions? That's right, yes. Okay, good, with that in mind, we have to have a quick executive session, uh, to talk first down and real progress. Thank y'all for coming.
Mayor, would that be, we're entering into executive session, percentage two point two, desk three seven one one A, one and-
Great.
Great. Second.
All right, I need a, uh-
Motion to come out.
Right, motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
All right. Mr. Knight, Mr. Abel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, I like so, no opposition? All right.
Motion to certify?
Motion to certify, Mr. Smith, Mr. Abel.
Yes.
Mr. Abel.
Yes.
Okay.
True, to certify.
Uh, Knight and Abel.
And then, both of us, yes. Can we have one more?
All right, we have a, actually have two more. Uh, need a motion to appoint, uh, Bobby Duffy to Mr. Bradley's vacant chair. Is that right? Is it that one? Okay.
Now, just to be sure, there's no other, wait, Tessie doesn't have to petition the judge for, okay.
No.
Perfect.
Okay. So who made the motion? Billy? Second? It's Knight?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like so. Hearing none? Motion carries. Next motion? To adjourn.
Uh, Bobby? Yeah, Bobby's gotta go in, be sworn in too.
Yeah, he gotta be sworn in. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, Phil said it.
Phil?
Billy.
Billy, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I like so.